No, they don't, they don't. They're just more... And you know something? They laugh at me. Alex, who'll be on the future.
Yeah.
He's not on anything. I think he's only thirty or thirty-one.
I was gonna say, yeah.
He's better than the people I see on that.
Smarties.
I'm just waiting on Jimmy. I'll give him thirty seconds.
Okay.
And then we'll start up.
Everything's on though, just let you know.
Township Porcebony Troy Hills Town Council Agenda Meeting July ten, two thousand and twelve. Public invited, public participation. Meeting called to order at seven thirty-five by myself. Please rise for a flag salute. Mayor Barbario, if you will?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In due part of our country, we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifi.
Here.
Mr. Di Piero.
Here.
Mr. Ferrera.
Here.
Mr. Stanton.
Here. Others present: Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lynn Business Administrator, John Iglesino Esquire, Township Attorney, Carol Kehoe, acting Township Clerk. Purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council meeting July seventeen, two thousand and twelve. Formal action mayor may not be taken. Statement of compliance: Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of open public meetings law. Filing a notice in the office. Township Clerk posted a meeting notice on the bulletin board municipal building December fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, which remained posted since that date. Legal notice appeared both Daily Record, Star Ledger, forwarded by fax to other local newspapers, local radio stations, December nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. Note: Council meetings are videotaped. They aired on Cablevision, public access, Channel twenty-one, two PM on Sundays. Also available for viewing at www.parsepaney.net. First up, appointments. Councilmember James Vigilante.
Are you anxious?
Somebody scared him, huh?
Because of mom.
Did he change his mind? The bride left.
The door unlocked?
Yeah. Well, oh.
Okay.
Still waiting?
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
I am Vigilante.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of office.
All the duties of office.
Of member of the Township Council.
Of member of the Township Council.
The township of Porcepaney Troy Hills.
Township Porcepaney Troy Hills.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Last time he was up, he had a lot more hair.
It's the first time I've seen Mr. Vigilante in a tie in at least a year.
You guys will just indulge me for a few minutes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests and my fellow veterans. Special thanks to Assemblywoman DeCrosse. I had the honor of your late husband, Assemblyman Alex DeCrosse, to swim me in on previous oath of offices. Now I share that honor with you. Thank you. I'm back and it feels good. Please accept my heartfelt gratitude for allowing me the opportunity to serve you again. I want to thank the Porcepaney Republican Committee for voting me in as one of the three names to be submitted to the Porcepaney Troy Hills Council and the Porcepaney Troy Hills Council for voting me in. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend and address the committee or council because I was serving with the United States Air Force Reserves at the Navy Medical Center at San Diego. I want to thank Councilman Di Piero for his kind words in addressing the committee on my behalf in my absence, Dr. Valoria for her support and friendship, and Julie Carrifi for putting her name into the political arena. FYI, the medical center I was working at is known as the Walter Reed Bethesda of the West. I've seen our veterans with missing limbs and trying to walk on their new prosthetics, legs. Between there and what I witnessed in Afghanistan this time last year, I would not wish those visions on anyone, but I also not trade the experience for anything in the world. I serve with the best of the best and continue to serve our wounded warriors and my medical folks as a first sergeant. I am a veteran man and I appreciate life and what it has to offer, no matter what it may be. Look around you and in the back of the room and notice some of the veterans here before you. Some of our police officers, township workers, American Legion and VFW veterans. They are testament to the spirit and courage displayed by all men and women who wear the uniform or have worn the uniform. We are the beneficiaries of the commitment and sacrifices that they and their comrades have made so that you and your children may grow up and enjoy the very blanket of freedom, that precious gift that protects us every day of our lives. The moment all of you raised your right hand and said, "So help me God," you became family. There's a strong bond amongst veterans. If you are a veteran, no words are necessary. For those of you who are not, no words are adequate. If every person took a few moments to look back over their life, they might come to recall one single moment or event that changed them completely. One event that shook them to the core and altered the course of their life. One special time when they realized that there was meaning in their life that they had never considered. A moment where everything else paled and faded comparison. One event that opened up the world for them and gave them a sense of their own existence. For me, returning to the Township Council is again one of those moments. Everyone's moment may not be the road that ends up walking through them through the light, through life, but it is the road that will lay the gravel that starts your journey and many way defines it. It doesn't always make sense, but the day will come when it doesn't have to make sense to be defining. If you're lucky enough, that moment will be one that gives you a sense of purpose and meaning. You'll know that moment when it occurs. The intensity and vulnerability of that moment will be your defining moment that will forever be etched in your character. I look forward to the challenges and opportunities of the future. I will make you a very simple promise. I will be the voice of reason and compromise, one of optimism and hope, dedication and determination. I will be the type of public servant that you can count on, an individual who speaks his mind, not afraid to make the tough and difficult decisions, works for the betterment of the community and always treats the residents with the respect they should richly deserve. Porcepaney faces many challenges, but when elected officials work hand in hand with the residents, there's no limit to what can be accomplished. I am confident that Porcepaney will continue to move in the right direction. My political career is not one of self-indulgence, but service before self. It's not one of self-merit, but excellence in all that I try to accomplish. It's not one of self-characterization, but the honesty integrity. Public service is not a title or a word for me, but a way of life. As I continue to serve my fellow Americans as United States Air Force reservists and my residents as your new Township Councilman, I look forward to hitting the ground running and doing the best damn job that I know how. I will be donating ten percent of my net earnings to various veteran programs. I thank you for your time this time. Until next time, and God bless you all. Thank you. If I could have Dennis Letts come front and center, please. Last year, when I was in Kandahar, my mom sent me some local newspapers. And I knew Dennis Letts. And then after reading the article about him in September, I realized I really didn't know who he was. And I didn't know his accomplishments that he made. So last September eleventh, when I was in Kandahar, I flew a bunch of flags. I gave one to the mayor and some other folks in town. And Dennis, I flew one for you. It was an unfortunate nine-eleven to you. Quick briefing on what he did is he was working on nine-eleven that day. And when the horrific events happened, he ran into the towers to help people get out of safety instead of running away from it. So I know it's forever etched in your mind. I know you, people call you a hero, Dennis, and you know, he called me. I don't consider myself heroes. Don't consider themselves heroes. So anyway, last year, nine-eleven, just a little plug for Outback Steakhouse. They own Carrabba's Outback and they own Home Fish. Founder Trudy Cooper and her husband came out with a hundred cooks, volunteers from all over the country, and they shipped out forty thousand steaks and food from each restaurant, and they cooked dinner for us while we were out there. We got good steak for at least two days. So. They were wonderful people and they did it in the same conditions that I was working in there last year. So last September eleventh, I flew a flag, a bunch of flags, and I gave one for Dennis, and I'll read it to you. Present on behalf of the Combined Joint Special Operations Air Detachment, United States Air Force, this document certifies the accompanying American flag as proudly flown in combat over Afghanistan and remembers the nine-eleven terror attacks on September eleventh, two thousand and eleven, in support of Operation Freedom. For Dennis Letts, flown by Mass Sergeant James A. Atlantic. It's flown on an AC-130 spooky, which is a cargo plane that those airdrops were cruising in the mountains. And because of the danger that they have, there's actually guns attached to the cargo planes. Dennis, I present this to you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all that you do. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're just gonna take a brief two-minute recess.
Thank you. I know my family wants to get out of here, so run now or you're gonna stay the whole meeting.
I think he's taking our audience with him.
Yeah.
So, having to go back home to the crazy house. He tore his house down and like Porcepaney's rebuilt it. And he was going to build in Deadville, but then he decided not to. Yeah, he's, yeah, they tore the house down.
How many children?
Two.
How that's...
Uh, seven and four.
Oh, yeah.
And they're very lively.
Remember?
As soon as that house kept getting built. Paige keeps saying by Thanksgiving.
Good to see you.
But he's the gentleman.
Good night. Take care.
So anyway. But it's probably good for me right now.
Oh, sure. Land has a therapeutic. They really are. They're good medicine.
Because I make them bitter for myself when I'm trying to get...
Yeah.
Sitting there with them.
They're, they're really sound.
It's good to have them.
Yeah, it is. And that's my little granddaughter. She was always telling me.
Oh?
Yeah.
Oh, no. It's good to hear.
How's your mom?
To be honest, two and a half years I lost.
You're not doing it tonight.
And my mom, she lost her mind.
Yeah. But the last time I saw you was up in Rosie's and, you know, she was with you and looked fine.
Where is she?
Sunrise. She ran up on the third floor.
Oh, shit.
At this table. You were very effective in here.
Thank you so much. I'll let you know about Thursday.
We got everybody back.
Thanks, guys.
Take care.
Get to go?
Yep.
Okay, next up, presentations. Councilmember Di Piero speaking regards to the Police Department.
Yeah, I have a recommendation to change the organization of the Police Department. I'm gonna read this into the record. If you look at Township ordinances, Part One Administrative Legislation, Chapter Four Administration of Government, Article Nine Police Department, Paragraph Four dash twenty-eight, organization. There are five ordinances that were adopted between two thousand and three and two thousand and five. I have copies of them here if anyone's interested. But Paragraph Four dash twenty-eight states, "The department shall consist of not more than," and I'm quoting verbatim, "the department shall not consist of more than one hundred and thirteen full-time active-duty members. The table of organizations shall be as follows. A, not more than one chief of police. B, not more than one deputy chief. C, not more than four captains. D, not more than eight lieutenants. E, not more than nineteen sergeants. And F, not more than eighty patrol officers." That totals one thirteen. Now, eighty patrol officers, we're down to sixty, one, two, three, some, some number like that. We're down a drastic number of patrol officers, people out in the street protecting us. Let me, let me just finish my statement.
The doors have to be open during a public meeting.
Open one of those doors, please. They're out there talking.
I didn't mean to.
Okay. Just, just a bit of, of history rationale for my concern about this. When Michael Luther was the mayor and Michael Peckerman became chief of police, the organization consisted of four captains and one chief. No deputy chief. Chief Peckerman begged for a deputy chief. An agreement was reached between the mayor, the police department, and the council that if we promoted a captain to deputy chief, that captain's spot would remain vacant. It appears some of us have better memories than others. Of course, none of these council members would remember that. I believe that the police department has an abundance of higher-ranking officers and a serious shortage of patrol officers. In other words, I believe that we are top-heavy. We need more, we do not need more chiefs. We need more Indians. Now, I respect Mayor Barbario and Chief DeZenzio and their desire to create an additional captain. And I know they're sincere and they're concerned about public safety, but I'm concerned about public safety too. I'm going to meet with them and talk to them just to keep an open mind, but, but their concern was relating back to the Hurricane Irene, the horrendous flood, the five-hundred-year flood that we experienced, and that's, that was a horrendous thing. And some of those people still have not settled into their normal lives yet. And no, no one can downplay the importance of that, and that's public safety. But we built that hundred-year flood wall and that pumping station thirty-five years ago. And they did it up until Hurricane Irene, which was a five-hundred-year flood, and came over the hundred-year flood wall. We protected the residents of Lower Lake Hiawatha. I believe we need to hire more patrol officers. We're down about eighteen or nineteen patrol officers. They're not out in the street. They're not protecting the general public in Porcepaney. I believe that's a stronger public issue than, than an occasional occurrence of, of a five-hundred-year flood, which we may never see in our lifetime, I hope. Okay, but, but, but every day, we need police out on those streets. And so I'm, I'm, I wanna hire more police officers. I don't wanna create another chief. Another, well, captain, but up in, up in the ranks. So I would like to make a motion now that to modify Article Nine, Paragraph Four dash twenty-eight to state Item C, to not more than three captains. Is there a second?
Second. Anyone discussion?
Well, Mayor, if you wanna discuss this.
Yes, I'll be meeting with Mr. Di Piero, Councilman Di Piero, this week to tell him why I believe the need for the fourth captain is, and basically it's preparedness, it's public safety. We are, as you know, putting the OEM in the police department. There's more responsibility in regards to that. And if you promote a captain, that shouldn't deter you from hiring other police officers. And that's something we could discuss in our meeting. But the fact of the matter is that I believe, as a, as a, you know, as the mayor of the Township Porcepaney Troy Hills, I did my due diligence. Well, I'll have the chief come speak next week while we feel it's important to have another captain to run OEM. Mr. Di Piero was correct when he said, regards to not having a fourth captain. Well, at that time, there was no OEM in the Porcepaney Police Department. Responsibilities weren't as much. During that, not just the flood, during many events in the township since I've been mayor, there's a lot that's happened since I've been mayor. And I, and I believe the need to have that captain run the OEM in such a way because we're the largest town in the community. We have to handle a lot. Dave, you're a fireman in town. You know the needs. You see what happens out there. During the flood, I did my due diligence. Had water up to my hip, as well as you did, Mr. Di Piero. It was a tough time, tough event. You know what? I do believe anything can happen. After two thousand and eleven, you thought you just had the hurricane, then you had the snowstorm. We have a, we have a great, a great system, and I really truly believe that this is what needs to happen for Porcepaney. But that shouldn't deter us from hiring other police officers. And that's something we'll discuss, but that's something we're gonna be discussing hopefully by the end of this week. The councilman and I, we came to an agreement to meet and talk about it.
At this time, Mr. Di Piero is gonna ask about tabling until after the meeting.
Let me, let me just make another statement because when you promote a lieutenant to a captain, then you're gonna promote a sergeant to a lieutenant, then you're gonna promote a patrolman to a sergeant, and you're gonna have one less police officer out on the street. You know, I have a problem with, with, with this hierarchy where I still believe we are top-heavy. I'm still gonna listen to what the mayor has to say. I would like this still to be on because I'm not, if I'm not convinced, I would still like to go forward with my motion.
But I also, but I also did say that if I promote the captain, that that lieutenant position would go away.
But I heard that promise, I heard that promise five years ago.
And that's fine. If you wanna cut that lieutenant position out, feel free. But the fact of the matter is, you know, that's why I'm gonna wait to discuss it with you because a lot of this can become political, and it will become political. I can tell you that for a fact, ladies and gentlemen. And I don't mean you, Mr. Di Piero, Councilman Di Piero, but it can become political. And it's one thing I will not stand for when it does become political.
Let me, let me just make one more comment because, I'm sorry, Vinny.
No, go ahead.
This is, this is my eighth-four-year term on the council, and I was on the school board two, three, two, three-year terms before that. I've been doing this a very long time, and, and I've always tended to look for the long term. What's best long-term for Porcepaney? And, and I don't, right now, I don't see this being the long-term best to create another captain. I would much rather, much rather, hire six new police officers in our next year's budget, or seven, whatever you recommend, okay? And, and not do this now.
Mr. Farr?
I, I just wanted to say, obviously, you did your homework, Mr. Di Piero. I'm caught off-guard here. Didn't know anything about it till today. I agree with President Stanton. Maybe we should just table it for today and everybody could do their own research. You know, thirty days is not gonna make a difference. That's just my opinion. I don't know anything about it. I'd like to talk about it. If there's a meeting, I don't know how many of us can go. I think two. I'd like to be there, but I can get bumped by the president, I guess. That's my opinion, but I'm up for the safety of the citizens for sure, number one and foremost. But I don't think thirty days is gonna make a difference. I'd like to think about it.
My, my question is, one, we have a deputy chief, so why couldn't the OEM report to the deputy chief? And/or why couldn't we have OEM report to a lieutenant rather than a captain? I mean, what's the difference between if the lieutenant is kind of the in charge? I mean, we still have a deputy coordinator who, in my opinion, does a phenomenal job. He could report to a lieutenant or to deputy chief and then in turn save that money and hire an extra patrolman.
Well, let's just say, let's just say this, that, let's face it. A captain has a lot more pull than a lieutenant has, number one.
But it would ultimately fall to the chief.
If you, you can have a desk order audit and then they could, you know, you know how it works, council.
No, I know how it works.
And how it all works when you're doing the job of, of a captain, eventually it becomes a captain. Like if it looks like a duck, it becomes a duck. The bottom line is, this is a recommendation from the chief, and as you know, the chief made a recommendation a few weeks ago that was ignored by this council. And I think that we should really listen to what our chief has to say, and that's why going forward, I, I had the agreement with Councilman Di Piero to sit down with the chief. I don't think we should ignore a thirty-year veteran of the force here in Porcepaney Troy Hills. There's a lot to offer to the township of Porcepaney Troy Hills, especially when it comes to public safety. And I'll tell you firsthand, the night of August twenty-eighth, the chief did a fantastic job for what he had at that moment. The bottom line is, he makes a recommendation. I think that we should at least give him the opportunity to explain it, and we're not doing that.
No, I, I agree with you. My answer to that would be, we also have a deputy chief who has thirty-plus years on it, who is very capable. I mean, Deputy Chief Phillips is very capable of that. What about the thought of having OEM report to him?
Well, I guess we have to listen to what the chief has to say.
The chief, the chief has some pretty, let me tell you, he has, really, he has, he definitely has the answers, and I think it would be to our advantage to have the chief explain it. Fact is that he's running the police department, not the council, and I try, I try to stay out of it. Fact is that I really believe he knows what he's doing. I know, in fact, I know he knows what he's doing. And I don't think we should ignore him the second time.
Council President? Being a new kid on the block, I guess. Why don't we, I mean, I have some questions too. And since only two council members can meet, whichever two they may be, obviously, Mr. Di Piero.
Well, we can, we can call a special meeting. I mean, this, this is not, is this personnel-related that we couldn't?
The chief's gonna come to the next meeting, right?
Yeah, that's what he's...
We can discuss, huh?
Well, the chief comes to the next meeting.
Personal, personal...
Well, I think, I think there, there are personnel aspects to, to the conversation that you may want to consider and that may be appropriate to put further discussion with the chief into closed session in regards to that. You know, additionally, in terms of a motion, you can't, I mean, there isn't any action that you can take tonight because what Mr. Di Piero is proposing is an amendment to your, it would require an ordinance.
So it would require, you know, the preparation of an ordinance, introduction, you know, the whole ordinance procedure.
You just have to change one number.
Well, it would still, I mean, that doesn't preclude the legal steps that have to be taken
Yes, yes, understood.
in order to effectuate the ordinance. So there isn't legally anything that you can do tonight, anyway.
No, this is true.
So, again, if I, just if I may.
This is an agenda meeting. What we do in an agenda meeting is propose ordinances, and then they prepare and they vote it on at the following meeting. vote it on at the following meeting.
Right. So, I mean.
But we have to have it written up, though, first, right?
Yeah, it has to be written up. There has to be a title.
I guess my question, or my statement would be, is let two council members meet with the mayor and the chief, and for others that aren't attending that meeting, can shoot emails to questions, like I have my, I'll just shoot them to Mike or the mayor.
Well, be careful about email conversations, because, you know, when you start to have email dialogues between council people, you create the potential for quorum problems, because you can't have, if you have a meeting of the governing body, the meeting has to be noticed and it has to be in public. If you're communicating amongst yourself via email, you're violating the Open Public Meetings Act.
I'm just saying, it's just like my questions submit to them.
But if you're going to have a central point of contact, you can communicate that way, but you can't communicate with all of you on the email. That would be a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, so I would.
I meant what you said in the beginning.
Can we just have the chief come to the next meeting?
If there's a majority that want to table this, then I would respectfully request that the mayor make no promotions until this is fully resolved to the council's satisfaction.
Oh, you want my answer? Yeah, I'm in another world here. Okay, well, then after we have our meetings, I will hold that until we have our meetings, absolutely.
Okay, so we're going to table the motion. At the same time, if I may, may I appoint Mr. DePiero and Mr. Farrar to attend the meeting?
Yes.
Are we going to have the chief come to our meeting?
He's going to come to our meeting anyway, but in the meantime, they're going to meet separately. Sound good?
That's fine.
Okay. Motion tabled. Okay, ordinance is second reading, public hearing, everything in order? Carol?
Yes, sir.
Next meeting? Okay, status of adopted ordinance, they're all shown on the agenda. Scheduled meetings, 7/17/2012, 7:30 PM, regular meeting, public invited, public participation. 8/14/2012, 7:30 PM, agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. Minutes for approval, agenda meeting of 6/12/2012. Administration?
I have one thing, just one thing. I didn't put it on there for mayor. I just want you to know that we have met with FEMA and with the administrator that we got from Little Falls, and things are running pretty smooth now. It seems to be running smooth with the certain residents that were substantially damaged in Lake Hiawatha, I have to say. I have to give kudos to the administrator that we have. She does a fantastic job in regard to the lower section of Lake Hiawatha. Also, who's the liaison, Vinnie, you're the liaison to the Economic Development Committee?
Yes, sir.
I have met with Rebecca Feldman for the Morris County Economic Development Corporation, and we had really great dialogue. But I think now, it's time for our own committee to start to meet. I think we should set up a meeting, and I don't know how many individuals have been appointed by the council. I have two appointees already, but I think we need to make a move and start to meet in regards to economic development. We have a lot. We have met on in regards to Persippany-Troy Hills, and I think now, we're ready to go ahead with the committee.
I'll give your office a call tomorrow and schedule an appointment with you.
Okay, administration. Ordinance resolution set for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, township office reports, engineering. I'm only going to read the areas where there are changes. New road flood mitigation. Property owner on New Road requested township raise New Road high enough to stop future flooding, closure on roadway. Preliminary cost is $200,000 to $250,000. We're working with FEMA to secure funding for the project. We request this item be removed from the agenda till funding has been secured.
And will you remove it?
Yeah. Everyone in agreement? Remove?
Okay.
Yes.
We need some kind of a follow-up, though, to know when it's appropriate to raise this issue again. Be an administrative thing to come back to us when there's new information?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, train horns, intersections, quiet zones. The result of diagnostic team meeting from June 2009 showed the only acceptable method of implementing the quiet zone at the Powder Mill Road grade crossing would be if the rail crossing was upgraded to include four quadrant gates, as well as the other ancillary warning devices. The cost for the quad gates is over $700,000, not including improvements to the dam, power out warning devices, and 20-year maintenance obligation. The report on our finding was presented to the council. We request this item be removed from the agenda. In favor, yes? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, remove. Multway stop Camden Road-Hamburg Road intersection. Multway stop is proposed at the intersection Camden Road-Hamburg Road. Study was conducted by Gordon Method RBA Group. It was determined that the multway stop was warranted based on the data obtained. This office has no obligation to a multway stop at this intersection. Amendments to the Chapter 405, Section 22 and 24 required. Ordinance has been prepared, need to be adopted by the council.
Have a question.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a question.
I got a question.
Question?
Just to refresh my memory, stop signs in the past, once we adopt the ordinance, then they have to be submitted to the state for their approval, is that correct?
I think they changed the law. There's certain signs that don't have to go to DLT. I'm not sure what.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because I remember in the past, it took forever.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And this probably doesn't mean, so we wouldn't need state approval, this would be us doing it, and then?
I believe because it's a local road that we don't need. I'll check, I'll let you know next week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, TL Gardens at Parsippany, performance guarantee release, Block 411, Lot 32. Developer has completed all required site construction activity on the performance guarantee. Inspections have been made at the site during the course of construction. Office has no objection to the release of the performance guarantee. In a form of a letter of credit, resolution will be needed to be adopted by the township council. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Did I just ask the address at? Where is that at?
Tivoli Gardens?
I don't think that's Tivoli Gardens. I don't know what that is.
TL Gardens.
TL.
I'll find out for you.
Thank you.
They only gave us a block and lot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, chief financial officer? Anita?
She has a number of items, I think, on, a number of resolutions on.
Okay, everything set for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Correspondence, none. Applications, new limousine license, one-star limousine, 1259 Route 467, Building 1, First Floor, Parsippany, New Jersey, 07054, per one vehicle. At this time, I'd like to open this up to the public. You'll be given five minutes to speak.
My name is Bob Ziegler. I live in 102 Brookmont Drive. I was very happy to hear that the municipal open space tax was reduced by a quarter of a cent. First thing that came to my mind, I said, well, that sounds like a $200,000 tax cut. And then I thought about it some more, and I wasn't so sure. That's why I came here tonight, I wanted to ask you, does that reduction, does that reduce the base that the 2% cap is used for? Because if it does, then it is truly a tax cut. If it doesn't change the base that you're going to use for the next year, you know, for the 2% cap, then the money is just shifting from, you know, municipal open space to your regular budget. So I just want you to, you know, clear that up. Is it going to reduce the base that the?
They're two separate.
I think that.
Two separate funds.
The levy cap applies to the general levy, not to the open space portion of, that's a completely separate levy. If you look on your tax bill, it's shown separately, the open space tax.
I think he's asking something else.
Which in return would mean yes, because it is separate.
No, it's exactly what Jasmine said. It's a separate fund from the general fund, the open space, so.
Yeah, but he wanted to know if it was being reduced, because now it's 1.75 instead of 2 cents.
Well, 20, 0.25, less is going to be collected.
Right.
It's a separate tax from the general levy, yes.
But it is a savings.
It's a debt at the.
Right, it's a savings.
That's what he wants to know.
We cannot use the $200,000 into the general.
Right, it's a savings to the city.
Okay, if that's what you meant, yeah, we can't.
Mr. Mesmer, the township will be collecting $200,000 or less in money. So in that sense, it is a genuine, a true tax cut. It is, as the mayor pointed out, Jasmine pointed out, a separate levy. And the reason for that is because it was a levy that was authorized and approved by the voters. So it is a complete separate levy.
So it doesn't figure in the 2%?
No, it doesn't. It does not. But it is, but the township will be collecting $200,000 or whatever the number is, less money from the taxpayer. So in that sense, it's a cut, because they're going to be collecting less money.
So I think the next bill, I can expect 2% in the general way, but $200,000 less.
Unfortunately, that doesn't all go to you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening. I'm glad you're sitting down here, driving.
Name and address, Roy.
I'm Roy Nessman, 10th and 11th.
Thanks.
They just blew all over it there. Couple of people are here tonight, because I asked them if you hear about the occupancy ordinance for the second reading. Now, is that going to be amended next week or next month?
I think next month.
It's been amended, so the first reading for the amended ordinance will be next week. The introduction will be next week. The ordinance that was introduced last month has been pulled from the agenda.
Your first reading was there some people? Well, you didn't want it. I was going to ask questions about the occupancy ordinance. Would they be able to list their, some opinions on it next week?
Well, yeah, but Mr. Mesmer, legally, I mean, during their five minutes, people can say whatever they want, obviously, or three minutes, or whatever it is. But frankly, questions and comments regarding that ordinance are most appropriately made at the public hearing for that ordinance on second reading. And I frankly would be very, I would be concerned about the council or the administration engaging in any dialogue on the ordinance prior to the public hearing, because then the council would be subject to criticism that they basically had the public hearing in an inappropriate time. So the appropriate time to ask questions, make comments, and so forth on the ordinance would be at the public hearing portion of the ordinance, which would not be next week, it would be next month.
Just wanted to clarify that. Tonight, I'm not that I'm miscapitated, just things were changed, because I said about the occupancy ordinance. I've attended a lot of meetings, as you all know. I've been following the situation with our police department. Please help me out on what council president wants answers or administration. Wasn't it several years back that the Department of Community Affairs came in here and gave us an organization chart that we were supposed to live on? That's when the deputy chief came into play?
That was before.
The fact that we got that back, and they did a report, but we didn't get it until 2010, like the fifth, fourth month I was in office, that's when we received it.
Did they recommend it for town or size and everything?
They made recommendations, yes, they did.
But you're not correct, they gave us an organization chart, correct?
I don't quite remember it was an organization chart, but they gave us a recommendation.
You have a spending.
Yeah, they gave us, exactly. They gave us many recommendations and.
Well, I put the organization, I was under the impression, the organization chart.
You know what, I have the report. I can actually look at the report.
You can share that with Mike.
I think they have, I think I emailed them the report back in May or something of last year, not 2010.
I'm not going to make a big deal out of this tonight, because, you know, but I did download the City of Wildwood versus Marzo, in case you worded up two weeks ago. And I have a different of opinion on it, only because this was a, it's a commission form of government, the Walsh form of government, or is it the partner? And really, the council here doesn't have the type of authority that you went under account.
They did, well, go ahead, go ahead, I will.
It's something you can talk. I just have a different of opinion. And my only concern was, is that how everything came down two weeks ago, the 5th of the 11th hour, 5 minutes to 5, supposedly, we found out. And suppose I'm saying this, you know, now, I'm not challenging your competence here, but it's like our Supreme Court, mostly state and federal, like, there's more than one attorney review something, more than one judge review something and to make a decision. We just went through with the Obamacare. So just let me finish, and then we can address one of my questions. The last thing, as you know, Mayor, anytime I might watch when something is said or done that isn't correct, I contact the person. Case in point is last year with the school board, remember the situation with the numbers?
Yeah.
They were trying to make you look bad. I called you up, you thanked me, you spoke about it, you got in touch with Wendelowski, and it was corrected. Same thing that happened here two weeks ago, when I heard about, and I never attended the prior.
30 seconds.
Prior organization, standing up as in town, but now it's called the Community Partnership Program. I over it, have information on it. And you had made the statement two weeks ago that there was no expense to the taxpayers, or paperwork I had right here. There was overtime to two police officers, there were expenses, some sort of public note, or costs, which means banners and stuff like that, it's not a one-time thing of having it forward and forward. But I don't know if you made a mistake, or something else has changed, but it was an expense to the taxpayers.
I can explain it. You have here, I have the exact thing that you have. You have the Sheridan Hotel, the cookies paid for by the chief, out of his own personal pocket, so we got to deduct that. When they get all the overtime, there's actually six and a half hours overtime. Then you have a bill, and I'll get the exact numbers on the overtime, how much that is. Then you do have a bill for the Community Partnership Program at the Sheridan Hotel, which is $110. And then you have a 628 banner for Police Partners Program. Want to understand that this is a one-time fee. And then you have a contribution, which you probably don't have, a donation made by a resident of $1,000. And we have more, we're seeking more residents and anybody that wants to help out with the Community Partnership Program to offset the cost. And I could be wrong with the figures, Roy, I don't want to give you it, but I think it cost the town some $64 total, after the $1,000. So, okay, it did cost the taxpayer $64. But that being said, we're out there seeking corporate sponsors for all the things that we do, not just with the Police Department. And the one thing I will say, community outreach in the Police Department is very, very important. I know, Jonathan, you were there last night at the partnership program, and it went over very well. We got a lot of compliments, Councilman DePiero, Councilman Karifi, and Ferrera. I think it's important that we keep our residents. And this, what's good about the Community Partnership Program that we have, it hits a lot of people at one time. The fact is that we do seek public donors to come out and help us out. And at the end of the day, hopefully, Mr. Mesmer, at the end of the day, more contributions coming in, it'll definitely cost the town nothing. And that's what I, that's what we work on, we strive to offset the cost. I do it with the concerts, I do it with as many things that I can do it, but as you know, not every corporation's giving dollars today. But I knew you were going to come, because I saw your eyes light up last week, so, two weeks ago.
You know, both friends.
But we have, we have a gentleman, and a wife, and a husband and wife that are so generous to the township, and, you know, I'm not going to state their name, because I don't know if they want me to say that, but they contribute dollars to the, they did to the Citizens Police Academy as well, to the Community Partnership Program. And I saw them last night again, any other help you need, and then we're going to reach out to some of the corporate sponsors as well.
And Mr. Mesmer, I just want to address, first of all, with regard to the Walsh case, you may or may not recall, I don't recall whether you were here, but if not, you should go back and review the video from that meeting, because in my presentation to the council, I specifically gave an analysis of the council powers under the commission form of government, and also an analysis of the similarity of powers under the council under this form of government. Because I wanted to make the point, and wanted to do the analysis and come to the conclusion that the cases were analogous, and in fact, they were. So I would suggest that you go back and watch the video. But that wasn't the only case that was cited. Walsh was the more recent case. But that wasn't the only case that was cited, Walsh was the more recent case, there was also another case that was directly on point, that I cited as well. Now, if there's a legal issue that comes before, comes to me, and it's not settled law, I'll tell you it's not settled law, I'll tell you that it's a gray area, and I'll give you my opinion, but if the law is very clear in a particular area, I'm gonna tell you it's very clear, and in this particular area, the law was very, very clear. Mr. Valori's disqualification from serving because he is a township employee is not an area of the law in which there is any gray. And, you know, if a lawyer feels differently, they could've, they could've expressed an opinion nobody has, and I think those two cases are directly on point. With respect to the, the eleventh hour, you know, the, the names were submitted by the county committee the night before the meeting, on Monday night, so there was no, the issue came to me, as I indicated that evening, the issue came to me at midday on Tuesday. So, that's when the issue was brought to my attention first. I also wanna say for the record, Mr. Valori never, never asked me, directly, indirectly, through text, emails, conversation, or otherwise, whether he would be qualified to serve as a councilman. Never. Never had a conversation with me, never communicated with me that question in any way, shape, or form whatsoever. So, I got the issue at eleven thirty that morning, and my office scrambled to do the research that we did, and to get it right, and we did get it right.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody else come further, I'd like to close the public session.
Council President, prior to the public hearing, we had a motion that was made and seconded, and then there was discussion about tabling, but we never had a motion to table, and we never took a vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second? I'll second. Roll call.
Mr. Corrify?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, motion passes to table. Okay, at this time, resolutions, Mr. Vigilante, number one, please.
Resolutions, authorizing the award of a contract for professional services to Burgess and Associates, Inc., for preparation of housing element and fair share plan in connection with the amended third round requirements adopted by the Department of Community Affairs slash council on Affordable Trust Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vigilante, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Corrify?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, Mr. Corrify, number two.
Resolution, authorizing the award of a contract for professional services to Burgess Associates Incorporated, for preparation of a spending plan in connection with the township's Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Corrify, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Corrify?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, Mr. Farrar, number three.
Resolution, authorizing the execution of an amendment of the memorandum of the understanding with the Department of Community Affairs and Human Services, and the New Jersey House and Mortgage and Finance Agency by increasing the allocation of funds to the special needs housing partnership.
Motion by Mr. Farrar, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Corrify, roll call.
Mr. Corrify?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, Mr. DePiero, number four, please.
Motion to allocate money from municipal affordable housing trust fund to Morris Habitat.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Corrify, roll call.
Mr. Corrify?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, Mr. Vigilante, number five.
Resolution allocating money from municipal affordable housing trust fund to the Rose House.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vigilante, second by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. Corrify?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, Mr. Corrify, number six.
Resolution allocating money from municipal affordable housing trust fund to comprehensive behavioral health care.
Second. Sorry.
Motion by Mr. Corrify, second by Mr. DePiero, roll call.